Hello, Minnesota. Welcome back. It is an absolutely beautiful day here in the Twin Cities. It's about 60 degrees sunny. It's November 2nd. We're excited. We've got a great show. Our first guest, she's running for the St. Paul City Council. She was a recent City Councilwoman in 2004 to 2008. And with that, I'm going to bring on our guest, Debbie. Thank you for coming on the show.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the invite.
Yeah, we were just talking. That's why we got started a little late here. But your son was actually a hero of mine growing up. I watched him play football at St. Thomas Academy. And then he played football at the University of Wisconsin. So that's pretty exciting.
Yeah, we were pretty blessed. He's a great athlete. And he went on and did a lot of things. He's now a Minneapolis Police Sergeant. So he's with the Minneapolis Police Force.
And that's your history, isn't it Debbie Montgomery? Your background is in the St. Paul Police Department?
Right. I was the first female hired by the St. Paul Police Department on patrol in 1975. And retired in 2003 as a senior commander.
And what kind of experience did you have being the first woman in that position? Is that something that you knew you were getting into at the time? Or is it just came natural?
I was asked by a mayor. They had a court order in 1971 that there were 6% of African-Americans in the city of St. Paul. And there were only four African-Americans out of 600 on the police department. So the NAACP filed an injunction. And for four years from 2001, I mean from 71 to 75, they didn't hire. And then in 75, it became a life safety issue. And so then they were going to hire 50. And Judge Miles Lord said 10 of the 50 had to be African-American. And so they did all the testing. And one of the EEO officers for the city said, Debbie, I need you to take the test if you would because they don't have any women neither. And you're the only athlete that I know that could get passed because it was the West Point Military Physical Agility Test. And they didn't get women into West Point until 1976. And so to this day, I am the only woman who competed against men with men's standards. And got on the St. Paul Police Department. Because in 1977, they had a court ordered females class where they had 10 women. But they had lowered the standards.
That's pretty incredible. So that's partially at least where your sons got their athletic ability was from their mother. And so you're a young woman deciding to enter into the police force. At that time, did people advise you against it? Or were your parents supportive?
Well, it was a fluke for me. I got in only because I was going to take the tests for these guys to try to show that, you know, it was discriminatory against women. And in that year, they had 2,000 people that signed up for 50 slots. 450 were women. I was the only woman that passed. And only eight men did better than I did on the whole composite test. And so I had wrote a letter saying, thank you for the opportunity to take the test. But no thanks, I don't want the job. Because at that time, I was a city planner with the city. And that was a $10,000 cut in pay if I went to the police department. And then that Friday before the academy was going to start, one of the African-American men dropped out. And so I got called to the mayor's office. He said, Debbie, we need to get this academy started. I need you to go sit in. Because I was on the city payroll. So he could have me take a leave from my position to go sit in the academy. So I was only supposed to go in and sit in the academy for a couple of weeks. Get the academy started, and then I could come back. Well, after two weeks, I get a call. And he asked me to stay for another two weeks. And at the end of a month, I was doing really well. I was in the top of my academy. I was able to keep up with the men. And I said, well, you know, I don't know that I want this job. But there may be a woman that wants it. So I'm going to get through this academy. So they don't say that a woman couldn't do the job. And so that was my intent. And then after getting through the 21-week academy, in the academy, they don't let you put bullets in your gun. And you don't do the driving in the squad car with the red lights. And I thought, well, I'm going to do the field training. So at least I can say I had bullets in my gun. And, you know, had the red lights and sirens. And so I stayed for the FTO program. And at that point, I was going to go back to my job. There had been an election. There was a new mayor. My position was there, but it wasn't funded. So I could go work for free or stay at the police department. So I ended up by default becoming a police officer. And it turns out to probably be one of the best things that could happen to me. Because I got to travel the world. I teach over at MCTC Law Enforcement. But I also teach internationally, women in law enforcement. And I just came back from South Africa receiving the International Association of Women Police Heritage Award, which is the highest award that they give for mentoring and training women police all over the world. I was nominated by five different countries for the award.
And so you were born and raised in St. Paul. You raised your family in St. Paul. And you said you have how many children?
I have four children.
And they all went on to?
I have three boys and one girl. All three of my boys are law enforcement officers. My oldest son is a police officer in Prince George County, Maryland. My second oldest son is a police officer in Dallas, Texas. And my youngest son, Mark, is a police officer in the Minneapolis Police Department as a sergeant. And so they're all there. And then my daughter's an investment banker in New York. So I have somebody that might take care of me when I'm older.
And do you have any grandchildren?
I have 12 grandchildren.
Wow.
So I've got two girls in New York. I've got two boys in Maryland. I've got four in Texas. And I've got three in San Diego.
Nice. What a blessing.
Yes, they are.
So you retired from the police force. And then you decided that you wanted to get into politics? Is that right?
Well, my community had asked me to run. I retired in August. And my community had asked me to run. And so I ran in November and won. And so I started.
This was November of?
Of 2007.
Okay.
And so I got elected in November of 2007. And I sworn in on January of 2008. And I served for four years.
And can you talk a little more about your experience that you had on the city council? What you believe your biggest accomplishments were?
Well, thank you. I ran on jobs and economic development opportunities for our youth, the youth and seniors, and mixed income housing. And so in the four years I was on the city council, I was able to bring in 1,350 living wage jobs. I was able to bring in 400 mixed income housing units. I was able to get a Jimmy Lee Rec Center, which was on the capital improvement budget as number one since 1992. I was able to get a $20 million Rec Center built in 2008. And it has the only city indoor swimming pool, four gyms. I was able to work with the Minnesota Vikings and Stacy Robinson to get the NFL to pay for $200,000 of turf to turf the football and baseball fields.
Yeah, I saw that. And it brought back memories. Because I used to play on the Jimmy Lee Fields, playing football in particular. And I remember rolling around in the dirt there. And now there's turf. So I guess moving up in the world, right?
Oh, yeah. It's a phenomenal facility. Like I say, 20 million bucks. And so it's just a great opportunity for our kids. And we have a lot of arts and crafts rooms for them to interact in. And then I was also able to get 50 units of senior housing, a Cardi Heights built. And so at least I kept my pledge on what the community had asked me to do. And so I was very honored to have the privilege to serve my community for those four years.
Well, it sounds like you got a lot of things done in your four years that you were there. Something that caught my ear was the 1,350 jobs. Were these jobs that were able to be retained within your district in Ward 1?
Yes.
Or were these all throughout St. Paul?
No, these were just Ward 1. The new Supertarget that was being built. I had to negotiate with them. And when they tore down the old building, they were going to lay off the employees that were there. And a lot of them were Ward 1 residents. So I asked them, could they transfer them to other facilities? And they said, well, we don't normally do that. And I said, well, my folks need a job, a check. And so we were able to get them transferred. And I got Target to pay for their transportation. In the meantime, while they were building the new Supertarget, I said, could you hire all 300 new jobs from Ward 1? And not advertise outside of the ward? And they agreed to do that. And so if anybody remembers, around that whole long area, they had signs that said, "Jobs, Jobs, Jobs", with the arrow pointing back to a box, you know, a trailer, where they had interpreters in there. Because Ward 1, it consists of 30 different cultures and 27 different languages. And so I needed them to make sure that they had interpreters. Because right across the street from the new Supertarget is 1247 St. Anthony, which has got about 3,000 Somalis in it. And they were all looking for jobs too. So it was just a great opportunity to employ residents of the city in living wage jobs and give them benefits. And so that was a good thing.
You hear a lot of people who are running for public office or people holding public office, they oftentimes talk about jobs and economic development. And, you know, maybe sometimes they don't necessarily deliver on the results. And it sounds like in this case, when you were on the city council, that you worked to actually save a defined number of jobs that impact lives and families and individuals in your district. And can you share a little more with me and the audience about how does the process work? How do you talk to somebody like Target or a company like Target? Or like the NFL or the Vikings? How do you even begin that process of negotiation so that they're going to take actions that benefit the community and your future voters?
Well, that's interesting. Because I remember sitting in my council office. And Target, the senior retail guy, came in. And he had his lawyer and the finance guys. And they're sitting down. They got all their stuff on the table. And I sat down and I said, listen, one, thank you for building the Supertarget in our ward. But you need to understand, this ward needs a lot of jobs and stuff. And so I need to know what it is that you can do to help me bring jobs in so that they get benefits and things like that to take care for their families. And it's interesting. Because I'm talking to the real estate guy, who knows very little about the human resource side. So most of the time, I would be asking for things. And he'd have to go and get on the phone and talk to Human Resources. And I remember him telling me when they originally were going to lay off some of the employees that they had while they were doing the building. And he came back to me one time and said, well, you know, some of my employees, some of the employees have problems. We have some problem employees. So I asked him, I said, don't you have an EAP program? And he's, you know, an employee assistance, I'm sorry, an employee assistance program? And so he laughed and he said, well, yeah. And he had to go talk to them. And I said, well, why don't you put them in an employee assistance program? So that they can, you know, be, you know, put on a plan. And then, you know, help them to develop those skills that you think they're falling short on. So anyway, that's some of the things. But it was interesting. Because you're trying to deal with people in corporate America that deal with one part of a business. And then trying to get them to relate to another part of the business. And I was able to interpret to them the need for this. And he told me, he said, you know, Debbie, you were one of the hardest people I had to negotiate with. But you were doing it for the right reasons. And so I'm glad that we were able to help you. So they even built a covered walkway to the bus stop for the seniors. My green people wanted it walkable and bikeable. So you'll notice that we got trees. And it's not a sea of blacktop. It's actually got barriers in it so that you can park. And so it's, you know, attractive. So I mean, a lot of this, the request of the community, I was able to get the community, it asked me to get 16 things done. And I was able to get Target to do 13 of the 16. And it actually cost them probably $17 million more. Because their average Supertarget is about $20 million. And the one up on University was $37 million.
So yeah, the one on University too is, that whole area is going through immense change with the construction of the light rail going in. And there was an article in the Pioneer Press last week at some point about some of the businesses that are being impacted on University Avenue in your ward that are complaining and filing lawsuits against Walsh, who is a construction company that put in the light rail. It's a Chicago company. And a lot of these older buildings were experiencing cracks in the walls and different problems with the foundation. Can you tell a little more about this issue? And if you're elected, where can we move forward from this?
Well, right now, they've got lawsuits going. Because a lot of them, the pounding of the jackhammers, these were older buildings. And so they had cracks in their basement and in their walls. And in particular, there's a block on University between Chatsworth and Milton, where there are buildings there that have been damaged. And there were buildings along the light rail line and other places too. But these buildings in particular, they approached me even now to say that they were looking for resources because their building had been damaged. And they told them that there was no money. And so that's why they filed a lawsuit. And they're going through the process. And then in the meantime, some of the business owners are saying, well, now they're saying, well, we can't give you money because you're behind on your taxes. Well, during the time that the construction was going on, their businesses had went down. Their customers couldn't get there, things like that. So we are referring them to some resources, Billy Mitchell Law Clinic and some of those, so that they can get a tax lawyer to help them go through some of the things that they have to deal with, the county on taxes, some of the things they have to deal with, the city on permits and building things. So we're trying to refer them to different resources that can help them try to supplement the issues that they have with their lawsuit. And like I say, these are long time businesses. The Secondhand Shop, Sheer Beauty Shop. There's a church there. There's a video store and a tattoo parlor. So I mean, they've been there for a long time. I remember them when I was a kid. Because I lived, I grew up on Chatsworth and St. Anthony. And so it's just a hop and a jump from where I was when I was a kid.
And how did, because I've been looking into this story more and more since we first talked about it. How was Walsh Construction, the Chicago firm, how was that chosen to be the firm to do the construction of the light rail? Is that something that was competition for it? Or was it?
They said it was competition. This is the metropolitan council, you know? Because we were wondering why we didn't get a local firm to do it. But Walsh had experience in building light rail lines. And so they won out. The other thing is, they had made an agreement that they were going to get minorities to work on it. And residents from Ward 1. You know, I hear to this day, people say, well, Debbie, we didn't see people out there that looked like us or things like that. But in the same time, the data says that they meant their quota. So, you know, whatever that was, wherever these people were at along that building, you know, they weren't a lot visible, you know? Because they were supposed to get women and minorities and things like that. So there were some issues along the way. And like I was telling you earlier, we had a fight, the Preserve Historic Rondo Committee. We had a fight to get the three additional stops. Because the original plan, they had the light rail stops at Rice Street, at Western, I mean, at Rice Street, at Dale, at Lexington, and at Snelling. And we put an injunction in to get stops at Western, at Victoria, and at Hamlin. Because the stops were a mile apart. And there's not another place in the United States that gets the weather we get that has light rail. And so we have an older population and a bunch of younger population. If you look at the demographics of our ward. And in the winter time, a mile apart, how are these people going to get on the light rail? And they were saying, well, the buses were going to run. But they were going to, if the light rail was running, the buses that run every seven to 10 minutes, now we're going to be running every 20 to 30 minutes. And so, you know, it just wasn't compatible with what the needs are. Because we have the highest bus ridership of any place along the light rail line, 11 miles. And so this way, we were able to get it so that they're going to provide service every six blocks. And there was some complaint that they thought the cost of building these three extra stops was going to stop the program. And it wasn't about us trying to stop the program. It was about us trying to make sure people could ride on it. And so that was one of the fights that we had when I was on the Preserve Historic Rondo Committee to get that accomplished.
So you were able to accomplish those three extra stops that weren't planned in the original planning? And you basically got them to change the plans?
Right.
To add those three stops?
Yeah, the Historic Rondo, Preserve Historic Rondo Committee. So there's a lot of neighborhood people that were involved in neighborhood businesses that we went downtown and filed the injunction to get it done.
Just going back quickly too about the businesses that were affected in your particular ward. I read in the article in the Pioneer Press, it said that most of these business owners are only asking for $10,000 because that's, they're filing a civil lawsuit. And that's the maximum that they can ask for. And given their limited resources that they have, you know, they don't have the money to hire high-powered attorneys and to fight this big corporation. $10,000 doesn't seem to be that much considering this particular project was almost a billion dollars to get this thing done. And these handful of business owners are asking Walsh to pay $10,000 in order to pay for some of the damages they've incurred? It seems to me it shouldn't have to matter what the status is of their property taxes to get Walsh to be accountable for what they're doing. But do you know anything more about the conflict between Walsh and these people? I mean, it sounds like Walsh is just basically denying that they caused any of the damage.
Well, you know, it's interesting. Originally, we had had a couple of meetings. And we had heard through this funding source that they had, that they were, these small businesses were going to be able to get some money, up to $20,000. But it was contingent upon their taxes and the amount of damage. And so a lot of that, when you talk to the small businesses, a lot of them don't understand all of it. And they don't understand why they're not getting the money. And so they're trying to work through it. And that's why I say we're trying to hook them up with some resources, Billy Mitchell Law School, Hamlin Law School, some of those. Where they can find tax attorneys and real estate attorneys that can come and help them try to navigate through some of these issues. A lot of them are small immigrant businesses and minority businesses and women-owned businesses. And they've never had to deal with the big corporations, so to speak. So.
Yeah, I mean, there's other, it's not only a business issue. I mean, there's countless homeowners even. I know my great aunt was affected. She had a property right across the street from the cathedral. Beautiful property. She couldn't keep up with her tax payment. She's 85 years old. And started falling behind. And, you know, it just seems like these big developers, they see some of these pieces of real estate. And they take out the human element of it. And all they can think of is the newest and biggest building that they can put in, in replacement. So I hope that's not the case in this.
But as you're well aware, we have probably one of the largest foreclosure areas in the city between Frog Town and Summit University. And a lot of them were hit by that. And as I said earlier to you, it's a shame. I'm a native Minnesotan. It's a shame that there is an achievement gap in this state. I mean, we used to be number one in education. And now, as a state, back when I was in school, and now the achievement gap between African-Americans and whites is the worst in the United States. And the unemployment gap between African-Americans and whites is the worst of any state in the nation.
You're talking about right here in Minnesota?
Right here in Minnesota. We're the land of Humphrey and, you know, and, you know, progressive and things like that. And then we've been for a long time, the largest gap with the incarceration rate between African-Americans and whites. And now the immigrants, it isn't just limited to the African-Americans because now the other minorities are having increases in some of those areas too. So, you know, we've got to get people jobs. We've got to be able to stabilize families, families so we can get them into housing. And then be able to take care of their families with good-paying jobs and benefits and things like that. And so, you know, I just think there's so many resources in this state. I mean, we're known for healthcare in this state. And look at how many people are uninsured. So we've got to get folks employed, got to get them coverage, and get them up on their feet so they can become good, you know, citizens and productive citizens to pay back into the community.
And it sounds like you've contributed and donated a lot of your time and energy in doing so up until now in your career. And in order to do more, to get elected, you know, I think we should know a little more about your campaign. You were telling me about you're doing some door knocking today. Can you hand me your piece of literature over here? So you were going out there just talking to your neighbors and getting them to rile up. Are people excited about the election that's going to be occurring this coming Tuesday?
Well, this is going to be a low turnout because it's an off-year election. The only person, the only thing on the original voting was for mayor and for the school board. And this, we're just filling in two years of a term that our council members stepped down and took another position. So this is all new. So we're, you know, trying to get folks to show up to vote. I mean, there's 21,000 registered voters in Ward 1. In our last election, 3,600 people voted. So we have probably the lowest voter turnout of any ward in the city. So it's our goal to let people know, listen, in order for us to get resources and to let people know that we want them to address some of our issues, we need to make sure that they show up to vote and let them know, let their voices be heard.
So 36,000 voters in Ward 1, and there were 20?
No, 21,000 registered voters.
21,000 registered voters.
And 3,600.
And 3,600 voted. We need to get those numbers up, not just in your particular ward, throughout the city of St. Paul and everywhere. And this is the piece that you're going door to door with. It's a nice piece. I'm noticing some of your endorsements that you have here. John Harrington, Chief of the Metro Police, Retired Chief of St. Paul Police, Dan Bostrom, Ward 6, Council Member, is sitting council member. Brooke Blakey, Ramsey County Criminal Defense Attorney, is she? And Matt Bostrom as well, Ramsey County Sheriff. And are there any other groups that you're being endorsed by?
The St. Paul Police Federation endorsed me. And the Minnesota Women's Political Caucus endorsed me. So I, you know, we've been out there knocking and trying to engage people. And I've been very blessed. I've had a lot of my friends that have came and, you know, agreed to help us and knock on doors with us. The last two weeks, we've been knocking and dropping. And I always tell them, I said, talk to the people and let them know. We can't just stick it in the door. We have to let them know that we have to, we're dependent on them to come out to vote.
And then how can people get ahold of you if they either want to help your campaign, to volunteer, or donate some of their time or resources?
Well, they can email me at debmcdomcass.net. Or they can call the campaign phone at 651-261-5213. And, you know, any help that they can give us, you know, we've got three days, two days left. So we look forward to any help. It's a big ward. We go from Summit on the south, all the way up to front on the north. We go over to 35E on the east, all the way over to Snelling. So, you know, we've got Ramsey Hill. It's the most diverse ward economically. Because you've got the richest of the rich on Summit. And the poorest of the poor between the lower north end, Frog Town, and Summit University. But it's the most diverse ward in the city.
Yeah, you were saying 30 different cultures in Ward 1 and 27 different languages that are spoken just in a little segment at St. Paul.
I'm grabbing an interpreter every time I go somewhere. It's amazing. But I've learned more about world history in these last few years than I did in any history class that I was in.
Well, Debbie Montgomery, can you just take the last 30 seconds to address the audience and tell them why they should be voting for you on November 5th?
Well, thank you so much. I'm coming with 44 years of service to the city of St. Paul. I worked for the city. I started out in Parks and Rec. I'm a city planner by profession, a budget analyst, a grants and aids coordinator. 28 years as a police officer, patrolling all the streets of this city. Four years on the city council. I'm on numerous nonprofit boards. And I've been committed to this ward and to this city my whole life. I raised my family here. They all went to school here. And I just want to be able to be a voice for the voiceless and make sure that we can be heard downtown. And any support that you can give, I'd appreciate it. And I thank you for the opportunity to share this experience with you.
a budget analyst, a grants and aids coordinator, 28 years as a police officer, patrolling all the streets of this city, four years on the city council. I'm on numerous nonprofit boards. And I've been committed to this ward and to this city my whole life. I raised my family here. They all went to school here. And I just want to be able to be a voice for the voiceless and make sure that we can be heard downtown. And any support that you can give, I'd appreciate it. And I, I thank you for the opportunity to share this experience with you.
Debbie Montgomery, thank you for coming on the show. It's been an honor to get to know you and hear more about your ideas. And please, send your best to your son, Mark, and tell him that Tony loved watching him play football at St. Thomas and as a Badger as well. So, thank you so much for coming on the show, and best wishes with your campaign.
Thank you.
So, that's Debbie Montgomery. She's running for the St. Paul City Council in Ward One. It's a big election coming up on Tuesday, November 5th. And you can see by the link below, that's where you can find out, if you're registered, you can register there. You can find out where to vote. And as she stated, we need more and more people in St. Paul, the surrounding areas, White Bear Lake, getting out there and being active. Because throw the party thing aside, I hear so many complaints, "Oh, I wish this was better," or "Our schools were better," or "Our streets were safer," whatever it might be. You know, really, the civic responsibility begins with you. And it begins with going out there and making yourself knowledgeable about who's running, about what the issues are. Find out what the issues that you care about. Go to the Secretary of State website, right here. You can see that. Find out where you vote. And find some time on Tuesday to get out there and pull the lever for whoever it is that you support. And before we bring on our East Coast correspondent, we're going to line up a pretty remarkable video here. I don't know if anybody out there eats baby carrots. Leon and I, we do eat baby carrots with hummus and other things. And I've actually wondered, are these baby carrots, or are these just part of some bigger thing? So, Dallas, if we can line up this video. And I did some research on it, and I was just shocked about what I found out about baby carrots.
Do you know where baby carrots come from? They aren't simply small or young carrots. Let's take a look at how they're made. First, long, thin carrots are harvested and trucked to the processing plant. The carrots are washed and their green tops are removed. Next, the carrots are cut into two-inch pieces. These two-inch pieces are taken to peelers. The peelers rotate, scraping the skins from the carrots. Then, the carrots are hand-sorted to remove any unwanted pieces. An automatic sorter weighs the baby carrots and sends them to packaging. Then, the clean-cut and peeled baby carrots are ready to enjoy. Carrots are a great source of vitamin A, which helps eyesight, helps your body fight off infection, and keeps skin and hair healthy. For more information on the produce you eat, visit produspedia.com.
So, just, just a little bit of news there about baby carrots before we brought on Sam. And, you know, as we normally do at this time, we're bringing on our East Coast correspondent, Sam Wayne Pierce, to cover a wide range of topics. Something we discuss about often when we're talking about what to bring on the show is, we talk about often how crucial of a time we're living in, and how important a lot of these events and current events are that are occurring right now. And we like to cover a lot of these topics in great detail, but we're going to change something a little bit. We're going to try to move a little more quicker, talking about the issues, so that way, we can focus on a whole range of issues and give you the absolute and most current and up-to-date and important news. So, with that, we're going to bring on our East Coast correspondent from New York, Sam Pierce. How are you, Sam?
Tony, I'm well. How are you?
Good, good. Missed you last week. We had, took the week off for the show, and it's good to see you again. Are you still happily engaged in making your plans for marriage?
I am, Tony. And we eat baby carrots as well. And I've got to tell you, that was some, that was some hard-hitting investigative journalism from the Tony Hernandez Show on, I guess, carrots versus baby carrots, or the fact that there is no difference.
Yeah, I mean, well, in this world that we live in, you know, there's a lot of the modifications of foods. And, you know, actually, it's been going on for hundreds and hundreds of years about the genetic manipulations and creating new, different types of food. So, I always thought that baby carrots were just a manipulation to make the carrots smaller. But yeah, my mind was blown when I actually read that baby carrots are just part of a bigger carrot.
I would, Tony, I would, I'm not a doctor, but I would recommend eating as many baby carrots as you want.
But Sam, there was a big news out of the nation's capital this week, as President Obama's Secretary for Health and Human Services, Kathleen Sebelia, she went on to testify at a congressional hearing regarding the massive failures of the healthcare.gov website. Did you watch any of these testimonies? And what did you get from these hearings?
Tony, I did watch a lot of the coverage, and I, and I read a lot as well. And she apologized, so that was news. But what mattered more to me was, would we learn anything? Would we really learn anything specifically from the hearings, or this hearing that matters? And I don't know about you, but I'm getting a little sick of these congressional hearings. Not that I don't want answers regarding Benghazi, or the IRS, or now, the failures with the Democrats' healthcare law and website. And I do think we need to start calling it the Democrats' healthcare law, not just Obamacare. That's probably a topic for a different show. But the Republicans bring these people in, and they scold them. And then, the Democrats defend them. And it just becomes overtly political. The Democrats accuse the Republicans of being on a witch hunt. And the Republicans make it easy, because rather than, than this week, asking her about what they did for, let's say, alpha or beta testing of the software, it just becomes a political circus. So, the government now, whether we like it or not, is in the business of, of at least managing this one very important website and program. So, we need to take them to task, and the hearings should be worthwhile. And I don't hear that many worthwhile questions.
Yeah.
As far as what was in the news, Tony, this week, I think the bigger news is that the Obama administration clearly knew, a few years ago, that the Affordable Care Act, or Democrat Care, would have some pretty severe consequences for millions of Americans. Specifically, they knew early on that a lot of these Americans were going to lose private exchange insurance. And like they always do, they've spun it very well, that this is all the insurance company's fault. And I'm curious, Tony, is that fair?
You know, I'm not going to be one to go out there and protect or try to defend the insurance companies. But I think it is a big leap to try to, try to blame the insurance companies for what's going on. I more blame the system, and then, the system in which these insurance companies have to operate. You know, one thing that conservatives have been calling for over and over again, in terms of a healthcare reform solution, is the ability to purchase health insurance across state lines, with the idea that free-market forces will drive competition. And whenever you have healthy competition, that's good for the consumer, because it actually drives down costs. And you look at an example with Minnesota, the Minture. For instance, if you live in Rochester, Minnesota, and you want to go onto the healthcare exchange on Minture, you'll go on there, and you know how many choices you have? If you live in Rochester, you have one. And the question is, is how is that going to actually decrease the cost of healthcare or make it more affordable? And the fact of the matter is, with the lack of competition, and by only having one choice of a healthcare company through the exchange, there's going to be no price controls, and you're actually going to see prices continue to go up and up, and coverage dropped even further, which is basically what you're seeing right now. And, you know, as you pointed out here in Minnesota, it was written, and I'm finding the article right here, Star Tribune, Kevin Diaz, wrote on October 30th, "At least 140,000 Minnesotans will lose their current health policies." These are real people, real families, right here in Minnesota, 140,000. He said, "At least 140,000 Minnesotans who buy health insurance on their own are being notified that their plans will no longer be available under the new federal healthcare law, adding to the national fear over cancel policies that has overtaken the healthcare debate." So, Sam, now that we're debating just what the president knew and when, we're going to continue to see resistance from Republicans, not just on the website, healthcare.gov, but we're going to see it with the entire law, the Affordable Care Act. But a lot of people are saying that Democrats, as loyal as they are, they're going to have President Obama's back, no matter what happens with the website or people's coverage. What do you think?
Tony, we've, going back to our, our days at University of Wisconsin, when we were just budding political scientists, we used to talk about which party did, did which things better. And I think one area where the Democrats have really always outdone the Republicans, at least for about five years, is maintaining a united front. We don't see division in the party the way we do with Republicans, as the moderates and the old guard, like John McCain and Lindsey Graham, get into these really public and sometimes bitter debates and disputes with younger elements of the GOP, like the Tea Party. So, the Democrats have put on such a more, such a united front, and it's worked well for them. But now, the website and the law both have become so disastrous and polarizing, the reaction's starting to see some division. And I think that's really interesting. Senator Joe Manchin from West Virginia is now leading the cause to author some legislation to delay the individual mandate for a year. And he has a lot of support, not surprisingly, from Democrats that are up for reelection next year, that can't afford to go home and say they didn't support this. So, this is big news. But not just those Democrats that are up for reelection, Tony. You know, Senator Max Baucus, the Democrat from Montana, who helped to author the health law, he's, he's retiring next year. He has no election to win. And he said, "Yeah, we need to take a serious look at this." So, it'll be really interesting to see where the legislation goes. I'm betting the Republicans have some pretty serious internal dialogue going on right now. Do they actually steal a page from the Democrats' playbook and let the Democrats show this division publicly? And just let the Democrats do damage to themselves? Or do they get involved and fight over the extent of what needs to change right now? I think we'll find out soon. And I think that's an area that, that is going to dominate headlines in weeks to come. So, a recent example, where we saw some bipartisan support for legislation, was the Amash Amendment, you might recall, where some Democrats and Republicans actually agreed. And that was narrowly defeated in the House, but had support from both parties. So, this could be similar. And if we talk about that Amash Amendment for a second, we, we sort of lose track in the Obamacare disaster of, of the NSA and the spying scandal. But news this week was a lot of international players, like US allies, France and Germany, were quite upset. Angela Merkel is one of them, who, who didn't like the idea that the US had been spying on her and her cellphone. That's the way I understand it, at least.
Yeah, that was, that was a pretty, it was a pretty interesting little deal that was made. And I'm going to pull up the article here, if Dallas can show it. But this was in the New York Times. And the art, the topic was "Tap on Merkel Provides Peak at Vast Spy Net." And so, you can see Angela Merkel there in 2002. But essentially, what this article is saying, that the NSA, the practice that dates way back to the Cold War and has never really ended, is recording conversations and those of leaders in Europe and throughout the entire world. But this article really goes in how the NSA continued to track Mrs. Merkel as she ascended to the top of Germany's political apparatus, basically went into them tapping into her cellphone calls. And it also goes into detail about how long these particular phone conversations are stored for, where they store them, again, how long they do, whether they delete them permanently or put them on a separate base. Another thing that I thought was interesting in this article was that you don't have to be the leader of Germany in order to be targeted by the NSA. It said that they find low-level targets, and they'll initiate the same eavesdropping and listening to the conversations as they do in this particular case. And so, no matter what the NSA is rumored to be changing, like, we know that Angela Merkel is not too happy about the spying. But in other news, though, Sam, that she may be pretty happy with, is where Germany ranked in the World's Economic Forum's 2013 report on the global gender gap. Tell us a little more, Sam, about the research that they did on the, on the gender gap.
Sure, Tony. Quick question, though. Would it be completely inappropriate for President Obama to call up Angela Merkel and say, "You know, you guys did start two world wars. We just, we've got to keep an eye on you?"
No, I don't think it would be that inappropriate. And, you know, shouldn't it be a given that the United States is gonna, we're going to eavesdrop on fellow country people, whether they're allies or not? Isn't that a given in the international scene?
One of the things, and I'll get to that gender gap study in just a second, Tony, but what, one of the things that I find so interesting about the NSA, when they're spying externally, we've talked about how we don't like it so much when, when they're spying on us, American citizens. But the external spying, it's been going on, like you said, since the days of the Cold War. And one, one thing that I read this week was, a lot of these Europeans that started these practices going back decades, they just don't like that Americans have perfected it and do it better than them now. And that has a lot to do with why they're so publicly outraged. But it's a, it's a dangerous, dangerous world. And if this were, if this were Syria, and the Saudi royal family, and the, the, what's his name, the Khomeini, the Supreme Leader of Iran, you know, if the news was, the US has been tracking these people's cellphones, there'd be no outrage. So, how do you handle who's your friend, who's your enemy, who do you spy on and who you don't? I think that's a really interesting topic, so.
Yeah. And one last point to that, Sam, too, is that, I mean, if you're, if you're holding a public office, if you're a major leader of some major country, or any country for that matter, you essentially operate under the assumption that everything that you say or do is being recorded, don't you?
Sure. I, I would assume. So, but there must be, you know, there must be private moments with, you know, your cabinet, or your ministers in a European position, that you, that you hope the room's not bugged, or that your, that your lines aren't being traced and followed. So, it's a, it'll be interesting to see, do Americans even care about what the Europeans think? Or are we just upset because we don't want our government spying on us? It'll, it'll have to play out, Tony. We'll have to see how that goes. So, so you'd asked, so you said that Chancellor Merkel might be a little happier about the news regarding the global gender gap report study that, that came out from the World Economic Forum. They started doing this in 2006, and they released the report annually, you know, every year, they've, they've released it since. And you're right, Germany, like most of the northern European countries, specifically the Scandinavian, Scandinavian countries, ranks very high. Iceland, I think, was number one overall. Germany was 14. And this is out of, you know, almost 200 countries in the world. So, that's very good. The study's important, because what it does, it essentially ranks every country as far as what is the gender gap that exists between men and women for opportunity, ultimately, maybe career, opportunity, and how you can participate in your country's economy. But it starts with things like education. Is there opportunity for everyone, boys and girls, to go to school, to go to, to high school, to go on to college, that sort of thing? And there are a lot of criteria that they use, but what's most, and it's very exhaustive, but what's most important is, in any country, 50, 50% of your population is women. So, if you're not allowing them to go get educated and participate in society, it's, it's, it's just downright stupid. I was trying to come up with a more, a better word for TV, but it's just idiocy. So, not surprisingly, Middle Eastern countries tend to rank near the bottom of these rankings. I mean, women still can't drive in Saudi Arabia, for example. So, so it's an interesting study, and it's fun to see which parts of the world allow women to close in on that gender gap. But Tony, this report gave a lot of insight on a global basis. Closer to home in Minnesota, you didn't have a gender debate this week, but the Chisago County Republicans unfortunately found a way to ignite some racial sensitivities with a Facebook post. What, what were they doing and what were they thinking?
Yeah, well, I'm going to, I'm going to actually play a little video here to, that the Star Tribune did, that I think summarizes everything pretty well. I'm going to line that up here. But yeah, essentially, it was a Facebook post. I believe it was from the Chisago County Republican Facebook page, or it might be from one of those group pages. The article by Joseph Lindberg in the Pioneer Press wasn't exactly clear. But essentially, this post was made in the name of Chisago County Republicans. And it created a lot of outrage. And we're going to play a little bit of it right now. So, Dallas, if you can line that up.
...storm over a Facebook post. Chisago County Republican Party posted this on Wednesday. Pro-choice, against slavery, don't buy one. The post has since been taken down. But joining us now is DFL Party Chair Ken Martin. Ken, thanks for joining us via Skype. What is your reaction to this?
Well, I find it absolutely morally reprehensible that a political party would ever use a picture such as the one they did today to try to make a political point. As you know, slavery was such a painful part of our country's history, and one that should never be used in a political manner, as the Republicans in Chisago County did today. It's hurtful, it's racist, it's bigoted, and it never should have happened.
They did take this post down eventually.
Well, of course, they did. After they were caught red-handed using it. Of course, you, you wonder what happens when people never call them out on their actions, what they would actually do. The only reason they took it down was because people started to object to it.
Well, we did reach out to the Republican Party here in Minnesota. We've been unable to get ahold of anyone as far as a video interview, but our political reporter, Rachel Sassenberger, did get ahold of Chris Fields, the Republican Party Secretary. And here's what he said. He said he found absolutely nothing offensive about that Facebook post. Fields said that as an African-American man, he finds slavery reprehensible, but saw the post as a reminder that the Republican Party started as an abolitionist party at a time when Democrats supported slavery. He went on to tell Rachel, "I'm not going to condemn that posting." What is your reaction?
Well, it's really interesting, because the Republican Party Chair Keith Downey and other Republicans in the state have already condemned the post. The Republicans around the country, as well as Democrats, are...
All right. So, we're going to stop right there and bring Sam on. So, that did a pretty good job, Sam, of summarizing everything that's happening. And that was the Democrat, Minnesota Democrat Party Chair. And he was explaining, you know, basically outraged, calling this racist and questioning what Republicans do when they're not being called out. And, you know, before I comment on what I feel about this particular post, I just have to say that Ken Martin, he failed to be as morally outraged when State Representative Ryan Winkler made a comment after the Supreme Court ruled on the Voting Rights Act, if you remember that, that came out, that decision came out earlier this year. you remember that, that came out, that decision came out earlier this year, that basically said that the Voting Rights Act of 1964, I believe, is no longer applicable to just isolate specific states, and they ruled that that part of it was not, I don't know if unconstitutional is the right word, but basically that they could no longer do that anymore. And Representative Ryan Winkler tweeted, calling Justice Thomas, referencing him as Uncle Thomas, Clarence Thomas being the only African-American Supreme Court Justice. He cited in terms of repealing the Voting Rights Act, and Minnesota State Representative Ryan Winkler tweeted, referencing him as Uncle Thomas, which I believe is equally, if not more, reprehensible. It's got racist undertones to it, and it's really just a poor overall judgment on Representative Winkler's part, and I think he realizes that, and he went out, and I believe he did apologize for that. But Ken Martin, you didn't hear him saying anything about that specific tweet, and now he's all over the Star Tribune and other places, you know, talking about how racist this particular thing is. So, I just wanted to point out the hypocrisy with Ken Martin on this particular issue. But, what do you think, Sam? Do you think it was done in poor taste, or do you think it's, the message was misconstrued? Or do you think this was just an overall racist point that the Chisago County individual was doing? Sam?
It was offensive. The picture was offensive. And, Tony, I think I... Tony?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I, I think the picture was offensive. What I would say, Tony, is that it's equally as stupid as offensive. If you look at the picture and you read the caption, and you understand that the Democratic Party supported slavery 150 years ago, or even that the Dixiecrats, the Southern Democrats of the 1950s and 60s, they didn't want to segregate schools. So if you understand this history, you kind of see where they were going with it. But most people don't. So, it's really short-sighted of this Republican group to put that picture up. Most people don't know the history, they don't know what they were getting at. And Tony, another thing, it's very unfair and a little ridiculous to attack the Democrats because their party supported slavery 150 years ago. I don't think there are any current Democrats that were responsible for those decisions. So, so I just, I think it was really poor taste, poor judgment, but it wasn't, it certainly wasn't the only big news out of Minnesota this week. You have some small businesses, you alluded to it earlier in the show, in the Twin Cities, that are pretty upset about building damages that have taken place following portions of the construction of this central corridor, which I understand is an 11-mile rail line that's going to connect downtown Minneapolis to downtown St. Paul. How much of this is a big deal in St. Paul, and do you think the business owners have a legitimate right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a, for one, it's a huge deal, for those particular business owners that are being affected. These are small business owners who have owned this property, most of them for decades. They're employers, they provide jobs for the area. They've gone through the wringer in terms of having this light rail being built, it's been terrible for their business, as customers have been diverted to other areas, parking issues. And now, they're making the allegations, and they have been for a while, that the jackhammering that took place, and it started next to Marty's Secondhand Store, but the jackhammering that initially took place was, created so many vibrations at these old buildings that their walls began to crack. And, you know, I don't, haven't done the research as to whether or not the jackhammers actually did it. This is what these business owners are alleging, and they have brought suit against Walsh, the Walsh Construction, which is the Chicago-based firm that is building it. And, you know, it sounds like they're just stonewalling them. These business owners are asking for 10 grand. You know, as I pointed out with Debbie Montgomery, this entire construction costed almost $1 billion, okay? So this Walsh Construction, although they have costs and whatnot, they profited handsomely from this particular deal. This project costed over $1 billion, and the fact that Walsh Construction can't come in and compensate these people for a $10,000 claim, I think is done in poor taste. I think that more further action is warranted in this. It sounds like they sent out some representatives to the buildings and took some pictures of the cracks, and did a report, and sent these business owners a letter that said, "Sorry, we didn't do it," and that's it. And, and there's something bigger going on here, too, I think, with this, because these areas now, where these old buildings are, you know, these people's businesses that have been there for decades, with the construction of new light rail, all these property values are going to go up. And so, if they can find ways to tear down, get rid of the old businesses, so that they can build more multi-unit, mixed-use properties, big apartment complexes, things that are going to generate the type of revenues that you know people are already salivating over, I just hope that that isn't the underlying motive for the powers that be, for the people that make decisions that impact these businesses. I just hope it's not the case. You know, and I hope that justice is served for these business owners, and regardless, I just feel that they should get compensated for their buildings being damaged, if that was the case, and then also for the inconvenience that these businesses have had since the construction of this light rail has taken place. So, we'll just have to, we'll just have to see, you know, where this all goes. But Sam, on a more lighthearted note, here in Minnesota, I don't know if you've been paying attention to the NBA or not, but the Timberwolves' season started on Wednesday night, and, you know, I'm not much of a NBA basketball fan, but I know that you are. Do Minnesota basketball fans, do we have anything to be excited about this year?
Tony, the good news, yeah, I say yes. The good news is, they won their opener on Wednesday night, and then they beat Oklahoma City and Kevin Durant last night. Oklahoma City's very good. So, Minnesota's 2-0, and 2-0 is always acceptable, especially since the Timberwolves finished dead last in the NBA's Northwest Division last year. Tony, with the Timberwolves, the better news, other than 2-0, is probably the fact that after last season, they finally parted ways with General Manager David Kahn. He'd been there for many years, he was the genius, and I'm being sarcastic, who drafted three point guards and won first round a few years back, Rubio being the only one that's still there. They've been a disaster. This is how bad they are, Tony. The NBA, like college basketball, everybody gets into the playoffs, and the Timberwolves haven't been there in a decade. It's been a decade of futility. So a 2-0 start, new management, I'm all for it, I'm excited. And Tony, I wanted to say one last thing. Any sports that you watch could be a lot better if you order a pizza and it's delivered by a drone. Tony, if a drone delivers your pizza, do you have to tip?
Well, yeah, I think you're referencing that story we were talking about. I was doing, doing some investigation on new entrepreneurial activities that are occurring, specifically in the Bay Area. You know, we had the dot-com boom that produced multimillion-dollar businesses and millionaires, and a lot of these venture capital firms are starting up round two. You know, the ones that brought us Yahoo, and Google, and Microsoft, and Oracle, Oracle, they're coming with round two because they're stacked with capital. And, so one thing they're talking about is drones and using drones for commercial uses. And, there's a whole article in Bloomberg about how drones are someday going to be used to deliver pizzas. And, and there's companies that are actually investing in these particular drones, which they say is going to cost somewhere around $7,500 to get this drone that you can, you know, fly around into a neighborhood and land it on somebody's front yard, and drop them off a pizza, or Chinese food, or, you know, other products and goods, which I think is probably coming down the line. But, yeah, that's the brave new world that we're going to be living in, but you know what? I'd rather have drones delivering me pizzas than Hellfire missiles, wouldn't you, Sam?
Agreed.
But, Sam, we're coming here to the end of our time here. I want to thank you for joining us again from New York, and I want to thank all our viewers out there who are watching the Tony Hernandez Show. We broadcast live every Saturday from 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock. We replay on our YouTube channel, Tony Hernandez Show. And guess what? We have our website coming. It's going to be tonyhernandezshow.com. We can't wait for that. Thank you for tuning in. May God bless you, may God bless America, and vaya con Dios.